Hitting the order, October 26th, it is 4:00 PM or 4:03. Ms. McGrew, will you call the roll, please ma'am?
Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Duran Dowdell.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockdick.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you ma'am. We will move on to item number two, which is the pledge of allegiance to the US flag, Texas flag and our invocation. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Father Christopher Plant with the St. Bartholomew's Catholic Church, and he will at this time offer our invocation. Father Plant?
I think he may be, he's being promoted right now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, good. All right. So do we start with the pledge of allegiance and then the invocation?
If you would go ahead with the invocation, sir.
Okay. Okay, and that's what I'll do. We start with reflecting on the letter of St. Paul to the Galatians, chapter six, verse one through five. Brethren, if a man is overtaken in any trespass, if you who are spiritual should restore him in a spirit of gentleness, look to yourself lest you two be tempted, bear one another's burdens, and so fulfill the law of Christ. For if anyone thinks he is something when he is nothing, he deceives himself. But let each one test his own work, and then his reason to boast will be in himself alone and not in his neighbor. For each, for each man will have to bear his own load. Let him who has taught the word share all good things with him who teaches. Do not be deceived; God is not mocked for whatever man sows that he will also reap. For he who sows to his own flesh will from the flesh reap, reap corruption; but he who sows to the spirit will from the spirit reap eternal life. And let us not grow weary in well-doing, for in due season we shall reap, if we do not lose heart. Let us pray. May God the source of all patience and encouragement enable us to live in perfect harmony with one another in the spirit of our Lord, with one heart and one voice. May we glorify God now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Father Plant. Now we will have Captain Brian Wojtek with the Katy Police Department lead us in the US, US pledge and the pledge to the Texas flag.
Please rise for the US pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Captain Wojtek. And now we will move on to item number three, which is proclamation recognizing October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is from office the mayor of the city of Katy, proclamation recognizing October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Katy. This proclamation recognizes that every one of our residents deserves to live a life free from violence and abuse. Through this proclamation, we pledge to ensure that victims of domestic violence know they are not alone and that our community is here to support survivors of domestic violence as they courageously move forward to enjoy full and healthy lives. Whereas domestic violence is a serious and pervasive crime affecting millions of women, men, children in communities in the United States every year. And whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ability, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socio-economic status, or religion. And whereas domestic violence can have lifelong consequences emotionally, mentally, socially, spiritually, and physically, and harms the core of the American, or the human spirit. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for our community to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous individuals and organizations like Katy Christian Ministries who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to its victims. Now therefore, be it resolved that our city council staff and residents recognize October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Katy, Texas, as we work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. In witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand this 26th day of October 2020, Bill Hastings, Mayor. And I believe we have quite a few of the ladies from Katy Christian Ministries in the audience, and just like to say thank you for all that you do for our community and all that you do for the victims of domestic violence. Now we will move on to item number four, the presentation of the Katy Police Department's state accreditation by the Texas Police Chiefs Association, and this was received by them on October 16th, 2020. And at this time, we have a presentation by the Texas Police Chiefs Association via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I apologize for that delay. Thank you for having me. This is exciting. I wish I could be there. These are a lot of fun to do in person, but I really do appreciate your time today. Honorable Mayor, council members, and citizens of Katy and guests, good afternoon. My name is Max Westbrook. I'm retired from the Austin Police Department and currently the director of the Texas Police Chiefs Association Recognition Program. I'm honored this afternoon to be representing the TPCA and the Recognition Committee. The TPCA is an association made up of over 1,400 professional law enforcement executives throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery of police services. I'm here this afternoon to present to Katy Police Department a certificate of recognition for achieving compliance with Texas law enforcement's best practices program. Several years ago, the Texas Police Chiefs Association developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. Many of you are already aware of accreditation programs for schools, universities, and hospitals. These are programs of professional excellence that require independent proof of compliance with a set of rigorous standards. The Texas Police Chiefs Association program is no different. We have 168 challenging standards that law enforcement agencies must meet. These standards address the full range of law enforcement operations such as use of force, protection of citizens' rights, vehicle pursuits, officer training, arrest, search, and seizure, patrol and investigation operations, and property and evidence management, just to name a few. This program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in the state of Texas, and agencies across the state are working diligently to meet these requirements. This is a voluntary program. No one forced the agency to participate. Approximately two years ago, Chief Diaz in the Katy Police Department began the process of proving its compliance with these difficult standards. They had to prove their compliance to well-trained, independent assessors. It is not easy to comply. The agency had to do a complete audit of all of its policies, procedures, training, and operations in order to meet these standards. The process culminated in September of this year when two trained assessors, police executives from other parts of the state, made an onsite visit to Katy Police Department. These assessors interviewed staff, inspected facilities and operations, interviewed field officers, and ensured compliance with all of the standards. Their report was then sent to the Recognition Committee, which is comprised of nine serving police chiefs around the state who reviewed the report and voted to award recognized status to the Katy Police Department. The vote was unanimous. During this process, the Katy Police Department has proven that it meets or exceeds all of these standards. There are currently over 2,700 law enforcement agencies in the state of Texas, and only 170 of them are recognized in this program. This evening, we officially recognize the Katy Police Department as the 170th recognized agency in the state of Texas. And what does this mean to you? The Recognition Committee assures this council and the citizens of Katy, Texas, that your agency is operating in a manner that reflects current best practices in law enforcement for the state of Texas. It means your agency is one of the very best in the state. The certificate that we present this afternoon is a symbol of professional excellence. However, the real value in the program is the process they went through to attain it. And this is not the end of the process. The program assists the agency in maintaining compliance with the standards. The agency will submit annual reports and analyses to assured continued compliance. And in four years, we will be back to do another onsite inspection, hopefully without a coronavirus, to ensure the agency is continuing to comply with the standards. Your police department has proven to well-trained, independent assessors that they are one of the very best in the state. You should be very proud of this accomplishment. And again, I really appreciate your time this afternoon. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thanks very much. Chief Diaz, do you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
Yes, Mayor. Chief Westbrook, thank you so much for lending us the talent of your staff. Every interaction with the Texas Police Chiefs Association was pleasant and professional. The recognition process, as Chief Westbrook said, was not easy. Our team at the police department worked tirelessly to accomplish the accreditation during social unrest in the community, and obviously the pandemic that we're still in now. Assistant Chief Tyler, Corporal Petruska, Officer Malara, Michelle Miller, Crystal Cooper, Priscilla Gonzalez, name a few, wore two or three hats to accomplish this. The process and our success as a police department was an entire team effort. I want to thank the good mayor, the entire city council, the city administrator for their public safety commitment. The award is, is more about the community's success, I feel, rather than the police department's. The police department is one component of a city committed to delivering exceptional services to all of its citizens. I'm honored to be a member of the Katy Police Department and honored to live in such a vibrant, loving city. On behalf of the women and men of the Katy Police Department, we're extremely grateful to have received the Texas Police Chiefs Association recognition on behalf of the entire city of Katy. Chief Westbrook, again, it was, it was, it was, it was sometimes fun, sometimes not fun, but your staff was incredible, and we look forward to seeing you again. God bless you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Congratulations to everybody at the Katy Police Department. Thank you, Noah, for carrying on this project. I know that all of your guys did an excellent job, or y'all wouldn't be where you are today. So I would just like to publicly thank you for everything that y'all have done.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we will move on to item number six. Item number six is comments from the public on any agenda item on the, any, any item on the agenda. And I'd like to remind everybody that you can press star nine to raise your hand, and you will be called upon. I ask you to please state your name and your address, and once again, this is for items that are on the agenda.
Seeing none at this time, Mayor. And we still need a call for number five, straight public comment.
I'm sorry, I skipped five, didn't I?
You're good.
Okay, we'll go back to item number five. It is public comments, and under this item, you can speak on anything that is not on the agenda. And once again, I'll remind you to please state your name and your address, and you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Seeing none at this time, Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We will move on to item number seven. Discuss and consider creating a capital improvement project fund from approximately $2 million in reserve funds. This is for capital improvement projects as approved by city council. It was requested by city council member Janet Court and council member Duran Dowdell on October the 5th, 2020, was tagged at that time by council member Carol on 10, 12, 20, regular city council meeting. We'll go on to 7A, which is a discussion. Counsel?
Mayor, at this time, I wanted to just let counsel know Andy had a surgical procedure last week, and unfortunately, he got a high fever and had to go to the hospital, so he's there right now, so. But I'm here to discuss anything. You know, he and I basically tried to put that project together, so I'm here for counsel. Any questions that they might have? We've had our workshop, and I'd kind of leave it at that for now. Just in case you're looking for where Andy is, he's, he's not, not, not with us at this time, but we wish him well.
Does counsel have any questions?
My only question, and I discussed it with Byron earlier, was if there were any changes since the workshop, but I believe Byron, if I, there, there, nothing has changed since the workshop?
I haven't heard anything from, from anybody from the work, from the workshop or after the workshop, but if you notice how we're setting this thing up, we're setting this thing in dedicating, we had an opportunity to finally talk to Art and get this thing kind of, how were you able to structure it? And Art has said, okay, let's designate Fund Four, and we'll create both the departmental and the capital projects fund. So we were able to get that in, in ordinance form and bring that to you. So, you know, we talked about what current things we have that we could maybe start, we're going to take baby steps to get this done, but start the Fund Four and things that we would put in Fund Four that we know of today. Then we would come back, talk to counsel about maybe doing some things that were on the deferred plan. But anything, anything we do is going to have to come back to you as a counsel. So even if we, if we discuss and decide to move money over from Fund 01, where it's at now, to Fund 04, anything we spend out of Fund 04 has to come back to counsel. Right, Art?
Yes, yes. When you, when you move it over into the Capital Improvement Plan Fund, the council approves that, that budget amendment, and the council approves everything that's, that's bought out of that budget. Anything that's bought out of 04, when you create 04, and then anything that comes out of there, counsel has, has to approve that. And, and part of what you do, sometime if you're looking at, at, or in the, in the future when you, when you set them up, you, you just divide it also by years. Like if you're funding something in 2020, and you partially funded, what, 2021, 2022, 2024, you can also set that up then, and you as a counsel can move funds and put it out there by years, so. But anything that we do, you would, you would have to approve.
Byron, I have a quick question. So today, we're just voting that we're agreeing that we're going to set this up, but in our presentation the other night, we talked about three different buckets. So additionally, moving forward, are we going to set up the other accounts as well?
So the other, the other leg that I had on that was the reserve fund. And, and after talking to Art, Art was saying more like the reserve fund is more of a policy, and that we could put together as a counsel. So right now, you have an ordinance that says you will have half your budget as a reserve. We then would bring back or come back with a policy that would say, we want to use this reserve and bring it up to 20A. So it wouldn't necessarily be a fund, when we're setting up Fund 04, it would be a policy that you as a counsel would adopt, Art? Is that what it is? They would adopt that?
Yes, yes, they'll adopt that as a policy, because that's your, that's your general fund that's designated as reserve, and then you, you adopt how you're going to spend that. And then, so, so now basically you just have the, the two separate funds. You have a, you have your capital improvement fund that you put your capital projects in it, and then you have the, the department capital improvement fund. Those are your two actual funds that you as a counsel will decide how much you're going to fund each one of those capital improvement legs that you talked about.
And then you would have the policy, Art, that would be the reserve?
Yes, yes, yes. That's, that's your reserve policy that the job kind of been operating on for years. You just, it would just now be a written policy on this is what you're going to do with your reserve fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
Just want to say, Byron, thank you. You know, we've all had one-on-one meetings, and we've had the workshop, and glad we were all able to work together. And actually, I think we, in the last two weeks, we went from one-third of the entire plan to having the complete plan. This is step one, and I, I think the addition of the other two legs of the whole stool really added to it, and the, the workshop was great. So real happy with this, with this final product of step one of the process. So thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If they are hearing none, we will move on to item 7B, consider an ordinance. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption on that, please?
An ordinance of the city of Katy, Texas, adopting amendment number one to the original budget of the city of Katy, Texas, for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, designating Fund 04 as the Capital Improvement Plan Fund.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number eight, bank statement summary and check register through September 30th of 2020. These are information items only. Item, agenda item number nine, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to item number 10. Consider a resolution authorizing the issue of unlimited tax road bonds, series 2020 by Harris Waller County Municipal Utility District Number Three, not to exceed $3,600,000. And this is in reference to Kane Island. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. It was recommended by CPZ that we deny these. Is this part of that, that wording, that new regulation on the wording, that the wording just has to be redone?
No, it's just, you would still, you would still, those were on the consent agenda. You're now on the resolution for the road bonds.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I got it.
Is there any further discussion? We'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 10B, authorizing the mayor to sign a proposal with Swaggle Productions LLC for video streaming services, equipment and services to record city council meetings and city council chambers at city hall, to be funded by the CARES Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. I, I talked with Byron earlier today, he was able to answer some of them. But one of my questions is, is there some kind of a maintenance agreement on these cameras that it, that's included in the contract? So like if a camera fails?
Yeah, Janet, Richard unfortunately couldn't be on the, on the call, so I'll have to get you that maintenance information.
Okay.
For our warranty is. I would ask counsel to entertain this, just, let me get the answers that you need, because what, if it is something that's going to qualify for CARES, we've got to have the money spent and complete by December 31st. So, you know, this is a company that we looked at, that we actually brought to counsel at one time and said, if y'all want to do it the right way to video your, your council meetings, this is the company that does that. They did probably 90% of the cities and school districts that are out there. So we have an opportunity here to, to have the CARES Act kind of pay for the bones of it, the cameras, the setup, recordings, audio, and then we would then in turn have to, we're going to ask for one year, and I think, Becky, if I'm not mistaken, is 24 meetings, it's about $17,000. So.
The annual, yeah, that'll be the annual meeting fee, and then we can purchase additional meetings à la carte.
Right.
Then if we, if we decide in the future to expand to all boards, we will consider alternative packets in a future budget.
But let me get back to you with the maintenance. I'm sure they got warranties on the camera, but, but I will get back to you, and I'll send it to counsel with the maintenance here.
Hey, Bear, I saw, I saw the warranty. I'm not, I don't recall seeing when I reviewed the contract, a separate maintenance agreement. I saw the, saw the warranty, it was, I can recover, general one-year warranty on, on, on the cameras and the equipment, but I did not see a separate maintenance agreement. But I did see, see the warranty, but I guess you can, you can pull that up, but I don't recall there being a separate maintenance agreement.
Okay.
Art, it was, did you see that in the contract form that was attached to the packet?
Well, I saw it in the, in the, in the contract that, that I reviewed, I saw the, saw the, I also saw the, saw the, the warranty. I don't think that's in, in your packet, though.
Oh, okay, okay. And then I, I guess, so. I, I guess, and maybe I'm just overreacting on this. The contract that's in the packet is all, is just a, a form, there's, nothing's been filled out. So are we going to see, or, I mean, what's the actual dollars? Is, are the actual dollars the $17,130 that we talked about in the one time of the $44,600? So are that, are those the actual numbers that you're asking us to approve?
It would be $61,730. That $44,600 of that is that hardware, software, and their setup for the system. And then right now, that 24 meetings that Byron was talking about, and they do, you know, they have 24/7 technical support. We wouldn't have a city staff member that has to operate the equipment because they do it remotely. That's that $17,130 of it.
Okay, and what was that total cost again, Becky? Okay. And so we, we will be signing a contract for just one year at this point?
And like Byron said, we have a unique opportunity, especially to fund that, that almost 45K of it through that CARES Act.
Right, right. I'm just trying to get, wrap my head around everything.
Right. Art, I can't ask for that a year, right?
Yes, 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 you can, but, but normally on those, on that type of equipment, of cameras, you don't normally have a maintenance agreement. Get the one-year warranty normally on those, and so, but I, I know they won't have a problem taking more money by, by offering you a maintenance agreement on them, but normally would, normally you wouldn't, you wouldn't put a maintenance agreement on cameras or things like that because, I mean, they just, they only work so much. But, but they will, they will take our money if we want one.
Well, no, as long as I have a warranty, I'm good. I just, I, I just didn't see that in the packet. I just didn't see that in the packet.
No, the packet that you have, it's, you don't have like all of the contract documents that I looked at. And we'll put more of that in there.
Okay.
And I don't like playing attorney, and I know you don't like playing city administrator, so. But I would ask that the CARES Act would pay for that one year at that $17,000. I would ask for that. I would help people stay away from the bill.
Okay, Byron, and do you think we can get the cameras in time to spend that by December 15? Are they in stock? Have we looked?
They're saying they can get to us, so.
But they needed it approved at this meeting in order to facilitate it in time. That was the message that I got from the IT manager.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm good.
If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And we will have now council members' reports. Let's start with Councilwoman Stockman.
I would just like to create, I'm sorry, congratulate Chief Diaz for his award. He does an exceptional job with all of his employees, and we're super blessed to have him. And thanks to Katy Christian Ministries for all the work that they do for everybody with domestic violence, and hope everybody has a great week.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Court?
Again, I want to congratulate Katy Police Department for all their work. It was a team effort, and I know they worked really hard to get this honor. And I'm really proud to say I live in Katy and that we have one of the best police departments in the state. Also want to congratulate the Katy Market Days. They did a great job in keeping everybody social distance. Everybody wore their mask. It was really a nice event, and the crowds were really right on their social distancing. Other than that, I just want to tell everybody have a happy and safe Halloween. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dowell?
I too want to echo the sentiments about Chief Diaz and the KDPD. I know a lot of work went into it. It's quite an honor to get that kind of recognition. Also, the domestic violence is something that challenges our community, and I thank the Katy Christian Ministries for carrying the torch on that. And also thank you to staff, Andy, Byron, Art, and everybody else that worked on getting this capital projects fund going forward. And Andy, get well soon. Thank you, that's all I got, Mayor. All yours.
Councilwoman Harris?
I just echo what everybody else has said about the Katy Police Department's team effort and really proud of KDPD. Attended events in Young Ranch and Kane Island this past weekend, had a great time. Councilmember Court and KDPD also attended. And also, the Corps of Engineers released their report on the third reservoir. It's, you can go to Katy Prairie Conservancy website, and there's some information on there. And I encourage people to stay abreast of that topic. There's a lot of work to do ahead. Flooding still remains one of our number one priorities, so we have a lot of work to do. And again, everybody have a safe Halloween. And thank you, staff, on all the work done this last two weeks. And Mayor, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Councilwoman Carol?
Well, when you're fifth to the table, there's not a lot of meat left on the bones. But I too want to congratulate our police department for the fine job that they're doing. City staff, and I too want to wish Andy a quick recovery. So thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Frank. All right, moving on to Mayor's report. I'm kind of like Frank, y'all have picked this chicken pretty clean, but there are still a few feathers I'd like to pluck. Oh, once again, I just want to congratulate the Katy Police Department. They're a fine organization. They always have been, and they always will be. Katy Christian Ministries, I know personally how much effort you ladies put into your advocacy work and the things that you do in this community. And also, I'm very aware that this COVID virus, that y'all have had a terrible, terrible COVID season with the domestic violence and the child abuse. And my hat goes off to every one of you ladies for the fine job you do, the hours and the time and the tears you put into your job. I went to the American Legion, that's Post 164. These guys have been basically homeless for quite a few years. Didn't really have their own meeting or building to meet in. And they are now located, for quite a while, in the old West I-10 fire department building over off of Kingsland. So congratulations to them. They finally found a home. They've got a place they can hang their plaques and their pictures. They don't have to move their coffee pot around. And it's an exceptional bunch of men and women who make that organization thrive. And they do so much for the, I was really surprised at all of the programs they have in this Katy area that we really just are not aware of on a daily basis. But congratulations, American Legion. Welcome home. Their dream is to come back into the city of Katy, and maybe one day that'll be possible. But other than that, Market Days was good. Betsy did a good job of putting that on with a lot of help from different people. And Captain Hoytick, if you're still on the line, thank you for all the help you gave them in laying out the plans and the social distancing and all the things that went with that. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. It is 4:40, and we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everyone.